I'll call the regular school board meeting to order. It is March 3, 2025, 6:30 PM. We are in the Winnicott High School Large Group Lecture Hall. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board, and were posted on the front doors and/or in the vestibules of district school buildings. This is a meeting of the board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public hearing. There may be a time for public comment as indicated in the agenda. The meeting will also be available to watch live at www.youtube.com/winnicott. Please stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Here.
Virich.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Ackman.
Here.
Cundy. Here.
All right, recognizing the administrative team present, we have Dr. Larson, Mr. Katie, Mr. Manier, Dr. Mashad, and Mr. Jerabeck. And I do not have anyone signed up for open forum. And all visitors, please make sure you have signed in in the back. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Cundy. Is there any discussion? If none, roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Cundy.
Aye.
All right, then the Norbert Rich School Forest Tree Library.
I am happy to introduce our school forester, Mr. Pat Colby. He is going to share some updates that's happening at our forest.
Would you guys want to come out here so you don't have to crank your neck constantly?
I think we're okay.
You all right?
Yeah.
Is that okay too?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I'm Pat Colby. I'm the school forest coordinator out at Norbert Rich. If you've been out there over the last couple of years, you may notice that the northeast section of our property has gotten logged off in the last couple of years, and you might be wondering what in the world is the plan for that. So I'm going to go over that here tonight. Pretty excited about that. First off, I guess I just want to say it's been a pleasure. This is almost my third year serving in the district. It's been a pleasure to serve in my role to all the students and staff and have the position that I have with outdoor education and environmental ed and FI ed and all kinds of different roles that I play out there. So we're talking about specifically this northeast section of the property. It's approximately six and a half to seven acres. It was a dying, or it was already dead, section of red pine that was probably planted approximately like 30 to 40 years ago. Between the years of 2015 and 2020, we had like three of the wettest years on record in Wisconsin, and red pine does not like being in water or having wet feet. So essentially, it killed it. Much of that section up here was dead. And then kind of going this way, it was dying. This section over here is still all red pine, and it's, we're hoping that we're in a little bit more of a drier trend and it's going to survive. But specifically, we're talking about, this is the area that we have logged off in the last couple of years. We logged that area off first in 2022. Kind of the area you can see that looks like it got logged off is the area that was logged in 2022. And then in 2024, we did this section here. So this is actually not standing anymore, along with thinned out this, the rest of the red pine section over here in hopes that it would help it succeed and continue to grow. We did those logging events as part of a log a load for kids program in which we had our entire fourth graders out, and we had like 13 to 16 timber or logging industry stations set up that they could travel around to. And the highlight was they got to see the live processor in action, cutting down trees. A really cool day. It started with our entire fourth grade. In 2023, we did the log a load again in a different section, and we also included an area homeschool group. And then last year in 2024, we actually invited AMRO as well. So we had their entire fourth grade, our entire fourth grade, and multiple homeschool groups from the area that got to rotate around to all these stations. So pretty cool. We, you know, served over 250 to 300 kids in this last year. The Great Lakes Timber Professional, GLTPA, helps run these events. We do get a portion of the timber sales back. We've approximately gotten $2,000, give or take, each year. A portion of that sales is donated as part of this log a load for kids program to Children's Miracle Network Hospital. Awesome event. Some of you, I think, have attended and seen it in action. It's really cool, a great learning experience. It's an all-day event for kids, and they get to go around and learn a lot and have a great experience.
Pat, the donated part, is that part of the 2,000, or is that an addition?
That's an addition. Yep. Unfortunately, like with that, we didn't make a ton of money off of it. Like when you're dealing with logging a section that is either dead or dying already, a lot of that timber isn't even salvageable to make into product. In fact, some of it, when they started to cut it down, it just kind of crumbled and, you know, it broke apart, and they just would leave those trees on the ground because they don't even have any timber value or worth at all. So we did the best that we could with it. So right now, the site very much looks like this. And if you'd come out in the summer, it's all green and about eight foot tall and impenetrable, and you can't see it, see through it. It's a bit of an eyesore. There's reed canary grass that is six to eight feet tall, along with invasive autumn olive and buckthorn. And there are sections where the red pine that is dead is still standing because they could not get to it in 2022. When we were in the process of logging, it got, we got a lot of rain, and they didn't want to tear up our property with the, or get stuck with the logging equipment. So they didn't even get to some of it. And that obviously presents a danger issue because that stuff's dead. It could fall over at any time if you're out there. So what do we do with this section? Okay? What do we do with that block that we harvested? We could just leave it, and it would continue to grow into that just eyesore of an impenetrable area that would never get used. The only value it would hold would probably be to, I know the deer love it because I was in it today marking some trees, and there's deer passing beds all over. But in terms of us using it, it would have no use. We could replant trees or even plant a, like a prairie style in that area. So considerations that I've gone through in our school forest committee have talked about was how do we get the most value in the regeneration? Consider costs. What is the legacy that we're going to leave of our school forest and of Norbert Rich, who was a tree farmer and planted all of those trees on the property himself? How do we enhance the educational experience versus just having this big seven acres of invasive species and grass? How can we involve students? How can we provide diversity and provide an appealing, like new regeneration for people that visit, both community members and students? So what we have formulated is this tree library plan where we take this top four and a half to five acres, and we replant trees in this area. This is a plan that I've worked on and consulted with Winnebago County Forester, Tim James. I got to give him more credit. He kind of came up with more of it than I did. But together, we came up with this plan of doing a tree library. So we would plant roughly 15 to 20 different species of trees that are all native to Wisconsin in about rows of 10, all exclusively, like one species of 10 rows, and then the next 10 rows would be a different species. Someday, being very cool that you could go out there, we could sign it, and kids and community members could go, that's what a red oak is, that's what a swamp white oak is. Look at the difference in the, you know, the trees, the bark, the leaves, et cetera. This would be unique to our school forest. I don't know a lot of other places that have something like this. We could involve the students in all of this tree planting, and I think it would leave an awesome legacy down the road, you know? Kids that plant trees could drive by 15, 20 years from now and know that they took a part in that, developing this, this cool tree library that is special and unique to The other two acres roughly over here, and I didn't include these because these are actually standing kind of evergreen or pine sections that are still doing pretty good. We would develop this into like a wetland prairie. Again, I'm consulting with experts that know more than me on this. So Shannon Davis-Foulce, she's a professor at UWO, and she serves on our school forest committee. She's pretty well-versed in the, in the prairie game. We would involve some of her students from her classes, along with some of our high school students, to go out and collect seed and do this planting. We would plant this over the winter of 2026. It would offer our property more diversity, an opportunity for habitat to develop for bugs, birds, all kinds of different animals. And we have like all these beautiful boardwalks that were built, I believe, pre-2020 or pre-COVID through Myron Construction that are just sitting in one of the sheds waiting for an opportunity to get to use. And I feel like having a boardwalk go through this prairie would be a pretty cool way to use those structures that were built a long time ago and were left with no plan for me. Now, it sounds all good and great, but there certainly are challenges and costs and considerations to go. You can't just go out there and throw some seed or plant some trees into eight-foot canary grass. Nothing's going to happen. The invasives will win every single time. So in order to do this, we must cleanse or sterilize the site, which is through a process called like fecon or forestry mulching, and this is actually going on currently right now. We hired Tim Scheider out of TES Construction with this amazing machine. It's fun to watch. They can take, if you remember that picture before with like the six, eight-foot tall stuff, he can go through with this forestry mulcher head and just, it just pummels everything in its path. So basically, we need to like cleanse the site down to nothing, bare ground, and that's what that machine will do. Tim is a member of our community, has multiple students that went through our district and has a senior right now. Tim actually quoted us at 11,000 and then donated 3,000 worth of time. Plus, he said he would stick around and do more extra whatever I want him to, so hopefully he holds up to that. So we get the, we get the whole site cleansed down to the bare dirt. Obviously, stuff's going to come back and grow, including all those invasives like the canary grass. So we would have to herbicide tree over the course of this summer and fall, and that has a cost to it. And then when it comes to planting the trees, if we just put trees in the ground and walk away, the deer are going to eat every single one of them. So that is not something we can do. We would, if we want to have the diversity of trees and have these 15 to 20 species, we have to fence it in. So we'll have to create a seven to eight-foot fence around the perimeter. And what we've done, if you come out there, I could show you, show you this whole thing. But we've left a lot of trees, or through the logging process, cut them off about eight foot up so we can use them as fence posts around this section and save us money on fence post costs. It still is going to have some type of cost to it, but it would make no sense for us to do this, go through the work of putting the trees in the ground, forestry mulching, all this whole process. And then if we don't fence it in, and we come back the next year and every single tree is eaten by the deer. So the deer present a major challenge to us in this process. Now, considerations, though? Positive stuff, the three timber sales, the returns from that, the approximately two grand a year, we get to put right back into the regeneration plan. I actually did an interview with Midwest Specialties Products this fall. They are a company in our own community. But I did, the meeting was through Zoom with someone in New York, which is strange. But they were so excited about this tree library project that they donated $3,000 towards it, and maybe we can look into other possible future donations. We have other donations and funds from years past to pull from for this. All of the trees that we request to plant, we get free because we're a school forest through the Wisconsin DNR. And then we, of course, can involve and use students or community members or volunteers to help with the planting to save costs on that. And we've planted some trees. These are just some pictures from the, some, the past, last year, last spring, we planted some trees with community members and kids. What does success look like if this project goes great? We'll have a tree library of 15 to 20 different native Wisconsin trees that people can easily identify through signage, they can learn. That's going to benefit community members, students of all ages, 15, 20, 25 years down the road, when those trees are mature and they're dropping seeds, there's an opportunity to actually collect those seeds and then make money back through the DNR where they then grow those seeds into new seedlings to be sold at their nurseries. You know, the prairie's growing, trees are blooming, flowers are out there. There's different colors. We got signs, boardwalk, diversity. I think this project is pretty exciting and could be an awesome asset to our school forest and our community. So does? Anybody have any questions? Appreciate your time and support and listening to all that.
Pat, I just want to mention, for what you're doing, thank you. When the family bestowed that to our district, that was their main concern, that when they chose us for that forest was for the regeneration, the restoration, and/or maintaining wildlife and so on. So thank you for that. The other thing that I really appreciate is the fact that when I talk to students within the district and their families and so on, and their children are coming home and the excitement that they have that you've, you've put this within our curriculum and have the students and the children out there at the forest, the excitement for them to see that and learn, and the program that you have going is exactly what we wanted and what we had intended when the family did turn that property over to our district. And just to refresh my memory, is that about 40 acres or?
Forty-three point five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Pat, so your current budget, do you have to take from that budget at all to get this started?
Not to get this started, like, like the forestry mulching process right now, that's, we're using the money from the previous three years of timber harvest and then that donation that we had. We'll cover all that. And then we have two future, we expect to do that log a load for the next two years. We have two other areas of the property that need thinning, so we should get some future earnings in the next two years as well that we can use to put back. Those aren't clear cuts, like those areas won't need regeneration, they're just thinning so that the trees that are there can grow bigger and healthier. So we'll be able to use the earnings from that to also put back towards this project.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate your presentation.
If anyone ever wants to come and visit and see it in person, and I can walk you around and really show you what it's all about, more than welcome to come out, just email me, we can set up a time. So thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up is the middle school schedule for the 25-26 school year.
Unfortunately, Mrs. Horvath got sick today, and Mr. Schrader couldn't make it, but I can answer any questions. I believe you've had this information, oh, thank you, in your packet for the last couple meetings, so nothing is new. As they were just going through it, they just weren't necessarily sure if they, everything was finalized earlier. But now we are moving forward and looking forward to having a more streamlined schedule throughout the entire district. Does anybody have any questions regarding the schedule?
I just had a couple of questions, and that is, when this is taking place like in the morning as well at the high school or in the middle school, if we pass this, the principal as well participates with the program. And maybe at a future agenda, if we could have some presentation as far as the outcomes at the high school, what we have seen since we put this in place as far as some of what we've tried to accomplish with aligning this within the district.
Yep. I think one of the things we're looking forward to is actually having six, 12 people be able to collaborate as well, more easily. So we're looking forward to that opportunity as well.
And then just one other thing, of course, and when we approve our calendars every year, there's always one thing that I'm concerned about, and that is always our reduction of actual instructional minutes within our classes. And so I want to make sure that we always keep that in place and in our mind, that we maintain as many instructional minutes as we can within our core classes. I noticed that you've got a comment in here with this as far as some of the elective times and so on. But across the board, our instructional minutes has always been something I'm important to think about.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If none, we will move on then to the high school skylight replacement.
Do we need a motion for the middle school?
No.
No? Okay.
This came forward to the finance committee. This has been something, and Mr. Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, this has been a need for some time, and we do have, it's four skylights that they're at their life, but they are all very expensive to replace. So Mr. Katie has tagged the most important one to get replaced, and that cost is $130,000. That will be done this summer, and that comes out of Fund 41. You'll recall Fund 41 is the fund that we have money in there for roof replacing and repairing costs, and that fund currently is just under $730,000. So the money is there to address this issue this, this summer. Anything else you'd like to add or comment?
I'd like to make a comment on this. First of all, the Fund 41, when we first established that Fund 41, we had to wait five years to take any monies out of that, and we have taken monies out of that for some roof repair through the years. Each year, we usually put in $100,000. This last year, we did not put in $100,000. Looking at this, though, I would like to propose that we take and repair and do the full job for the skylights, and if we needed to take half of the money out of fund balance and maybe half out of Fund 41, this to me is not like a roof repair. I'd like to see this job done in completion. And so my, my thought is, is looking at these figures, it'd be a little over 500,000, that we would take half out of Fund 10 balance and then the remaining out of Fund 41 and get the job complete. We have the people here to repair them, and I feel it's important that we get the job done all at once. It's not like a roof repair where there's a greater amount of dollars and it's a larger space.
Then, Mark, are you recommending we table this and maybe send it back to the finance committee to analyze that and bring it back to the board at a later date?
That would be my proposal unless the board feels as though that we could go ahead with it tonight.
Mr. Katie, are you the timeframe with the contractor for this? Is there a timeframe? We should be working with them to get this situated so we're, get on their list to?
Yeah, we need to get on their list soon. Contractors fill up pretty quick for the summertime. Mr. Cundy, with your suggestion to do the whole thing at once, the only thing that I'd be concerned about is shorting the fund because I still have roofs I have to do, and they're just as important as the skylights. So if you want to go that route, that's fine, but then we're going to have to make sure that we keep doing that 100,000 into the fund in the future because I got to make sure some of these roofs get taken care of too.
Right, and I agree with you on that, but I'm always been one in the belief that I don't agree with doing piecework. And with the size of this, and this project, to me, I think we should do it all at once and have that completed. I do understand the roof questions and concerns, but I'm also looking at future dollars and future budgets, and I think it's important right now that we get the job done. That's my feeling.
I do kind of like your, your idea, Mark, because with inflation, I mean, if you keep piecemealing it, I wonder what that compounds into with four skylights, you know, when it's five years from now? So I think your idea does have some good substance.
The other thing, Mr. Katie, maybe you can go back and say, okay, let's get the scope of this job done, completed at one time. Maybe we can look at a reduction of costs because of a one-time completion, doing all of them at once, maybe we can get a better quote, and also to have them come back is going to cost us more in the future.
Mr. Katie, in your opinion, I know you're recommending to it, just doing one now. Essentially, how long would you wait to do the other three?
I try to do one a year.
Okay.
But just so you know, when I talk about these skylights, I've talked about the ones right out here in the hall, and they're individual bays. So I'm not like doing half a skylight, walking away, doing half another. I'm doing a whole complete section, putting in a new one, and we go over to the section over here, the section of the library. So I would never do like half a bay and then you have, you know?
And I would understand that. You do a complete skylight. I understand that, yes.
Yeah. And I think the total cost to do all of them, I believe, was $457,933.
So according to what you quoted as per one, there is quite a savings by having them done complete.
Yeah, that's great.
Each one is a little, a little different.
Sure.
For what it costs.
Sure. One other thing you mentioned, the 100,000 that we put into Fund 41, I know Monica isn't here, but when it comes to annual meeting time, I definitely want to make sure that we do not overlook that and keep that fund as well established with the dollars in that. And hopefully then for future roof and so on, that would, you know, help you out with your question.
And just, we don't know what the budget is, and we likely won't know what the state budget is until October. We have our annual meeting and during, around that time, so that is good. But some, the reason why we couldn't do it is we just didn't have the funds to put in the 100,000.
Right, and I understand that, yeah.
Because it comes right out of Fund 10.
Right.
So am I hearing, we want to bring this back to finance? Is that what I'm hearing?
Unless there's a motion to fund it all right now, I mean, either or.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the completion of the skylight for the 400 and some odd dollars. I forget what you said exactly, Steve.
$457,763 and change.
Give me a little slack on that.
Sure, no, I understand.
I don't know if, you know, prices go up of aluminum or whatever. This is the quote that I got from last summer.
I'll make a motion that we, we go ahead and do this job for repair of the skylights in completion.
I'll second.
Did you want to add which funds? Did you want to add which funds, how much funds were coming out of which accounts?
You indicated here that it was a hundred and thirty thousand, is that what the committee did approve? Is that...
That's coming out of Fund forty-one, but I, I thought I heard somebody saying, take two out of there and the rest out of Fund...
Yes, I would like to make it, the motion include the fact that we would take the cost and split it fifty-fifty out of the Fund forty-one and Fund ten balance.
Hey, Steve.
Steve, just real quick before we vote, um, could you remind me, I know you went over your successive plan of roof, you know, never-ending roof repairs, right? Um, how much of that do you have coming up in the next year or two, just in case funding is a challenge this year? Are we going to mess up your schedule for next year?
I don't know. We have about twenty-five percent of the high school roof left that's still an old balance roof, original nineteen ninety-eight, uh, and we chisel away at that according to how much money we have in this fund. So if we don't have a lot of money, well, then we're gonna scale down the project and wait for next year. I mean, I'm gonna work with what we have, so whatever you want to do.
All right, well, we had a motion by Cundy and a second by Ackman to move forward with funding the full replacement of all four skylights. Any more board discussion? If not, board roll call, please.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Virich.
Aye. All right, moving on to the, uh, high school track resurfacing. Again, this was a, um, brought to the finance committee. Um, the, the track is in need of resurfacing, and if we fail to do so, the underlying lifespan of that track is diminished significantly. So by moving forward with this project at the tune of a hundred and seven thousand dollars, it'll give us another seven to ten years of life on this track. The track was replaced in full, it was twenty fifteen. Um, everyone thought it was twenty nineteen, but we've had a good lifespan out of it so far, so, um, just to resurface it, is a hundred and seven thousand, so you can imagine what that cost would be to redo the entire track. Uh, this is something that would come out of Fund forty-six. This is the fund that we are able to transfer dollars from Fund ten at the end of the year. That current balance is at eight hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
I remember when we had dug that all out and redid that whole tracking as far as the underground and the water levels and so on and so forth, it was probably in excess of three, four hundred thousand, if I remember right, I could be mistaken. Um, but to get ten, or seven to ten years out of this track, after we spent all that money, uh, getting it to drain properly and maintain like we have, I feel it's a good, a good project that we'd move forward with.
Is there a motion?
I'd move to approve the cost of a hundred and seven thousand dollars to resurface the track, pulling money from Fund forty-six.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Peterson, second by Stelsner to approve the track resurfacing. Any additional discussion? All right, then, a board member roll call, please.
Ackman.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Virich.
Aye. Okay, we are moving back to a matter that was tabled at our last meeting, and this is regarding, um, uh, the Act ninety-five for the Wisconsin Guaranteed Admission Program. Um, uh, Dr. Larson, if you'd like to bring the board up to speed on that.
Yes. Um, so in your board notes, you can see we did some research along with, um, our attorney Tess O'Brien, um, about what exactly, um, Madison is requiring or not requiring. They are called what's called test optional. So if a student feels that submitting their ACT test would help them, they certainly are allowed to do that, and they will look at that ACT. However, um, it's not, it's not supposed to necessarily weigh any heavier than anything else, but if a student feels they want to submit it, they will look at it. Some schools are test-blind, which means they will not even accept a test to look at. So, uh, Madison is test optional. Um, in reviewing what would be in our students' best interest for this year, um, we still, uh, Dr. Rashad and I still feel that we would like to move forward with the current, or the tiebreaker that was proposed at the last meeting, simply because our students are aware of that process. And putting something new out there as such as a weighted schedule, there's nothing a junior can do about that right now. We will look into that in the future for the sophomore years group of students, but right now, we still feel it's been the best interest to not throw something new at our kids. So we still do, do need to have that public hearing regarding this process, and we need to go through that regardless, so...
All right, then I'll need a motion to move into that public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Cundy, second by Stelsner. Uh, board member roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Virich.
Aye. Um, you've seen what the, uh, proposal is. Um, I would now open it up to the public. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, you are welcome to come up to the microphone. Um, this does not require you to have signed in ahead of, at the beginning of the meeting. All right, it doesn't look like we have any questions. What about the board?
I have one for Peggy.
Sure.
Um, so testing blind, what benefits a school from accepting testing blind? Uh, what would be their, their motivation?
So, test blind is not what UW Madison is, but test blind means you must not even submit your ACT test. They don't want to see it.
Right.
Um, I can't, it, I, it could be a lot of reasons. Madison has chosen to be test optional.
I, I just thought it would hurt, it could hurt the reputa- reputation. You know, you accept a student with no test scores, um, that's, that's what came to my mind.
Yeah. I, I'm not actually sure of other schools' motives. Again, um, the school we're talking about, and UW Systems are test, or excuse me, UW Madison is test optional through two thousand twenty-seven. I don't know what's gonna happen after that.
Yeah, go ahead.
This microphone got a bit dusty last time. Is it my way? Uh, so first of all, I think it's wise not to put an undue burden on students who are juniors now. They would feel completely blindsided, like, what am I gonna do now? So I think that's probably wise and considering the students as they are. Uh, a couple thoughts. Is there an indication of where the UW system or schools are going after this next year? Are they giving a signal that ACT scores will become important again? That's one question. And then, uh, the second part of that is, as we look at the UW system and kind of the new policies they're taking on as they reflect, uh, Wisconsin students, the top ten and five percent, how does that impact how we rank as, as they consider going on to UW School specifically? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure you're seeing your second part, but your first part, all I can say is on the UW Madison website, it says, um, we are test optional through two thousand twenty-seven.
Okay.
So I don't know what's gonna happen for twenty-eight.
Yep.
Um, I, I, and honestly, I don't. Um, I did not reach out to an admissions officer or anything either to ask, however.
Okay.
So your second?
So the second part, so there's the Wisconsin promise, right?
Yep.
I think that's what they call it.
Yep, or guarantee or something.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then UW has, Madison has Bucky's thing as well. I don't know what they're calling it, they're marketing it a certain way. But there's certain guarantees for, you know, Wisconsin students to be accepted or, uh, favorably looked upon. Does that factor into how this, uh, ranking occurs?
Well, that's what we're determining.
Yeah.
Correct, so this directly applies to that.
This is the, what the law stated was that the top five percent of high school juniors going into their senior year are guaranteed admission to UW Madison.
Yep.
Automatic admission, they get their, their name submitted, they're in.
Yep.
What our legislature did not think through is that the type five percent could be difficult to determine, depending on how the, the, the schools' rankings are. And we are one of those schools, not the only school, there are other schools. So we're, we, we are tasked with, um, making this determination to take forward to DPI, this tiebreaker determination.
Yeah.
Now, some of the other things you pointed out, the Wisconsin promise is actually guaranteed tuition for, i- i- it's related to your income asset level.
Ah, okay.
So that's different.
It's a good differentiation.
That is a differentiation.
Yep.
Um, so this, this really what we're talking about tonight is strictly UW Madison.
Okay.
And we just have to figure this out. There really, um, there's no guidance in, from the legislature at all.
So this leads to a question regarding that, then. Is there a particular quota, then? Is there a limit to how many students?
Top five percent, so let's...
Top five percent, but within the five percent, is there a say, hey, you can only send ten? You get what I'm saying? Because if there's a tiebreaker and the tiebreaker isn't quite, you know what I mean?
And help me, Lee, if I'm wrong. So our top five percent are how many kids for this junior class? Do you, sorry, do you know off the top of your head? Seven. So we have seven kids, but let's just say we have ten with a four-point-oh.
Right.
So that's where we need the tiebreaker to come into place, and that's why we're proposing the ACT, um, ACT score than the subscores.
I have, I have a junior.
Okay.
So I'm very curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Uh, any other comments, questions from the public? Anything from the board?
Just a quick question. What is the composite average score of our ACTs for this class? Uh, the, the class prior, I'm saying. Twenty-point-seven, okay.
Um, Peggy, you mentioned doing this, this for just the current juniors because it's late. Um, what have you guys thought about as far as moving forward beyond this year, if anything?
We're working on, oh, sorry, Megan.
No, go ahead.
We're working on it, we're not, some sort of weighted scale, like, i.e., um, let's just say AP classes could have a weight, an additional weight of, I'm, I'm making this up right now, but one-point-five.
Okay.
And then down through, like, what would carry additional weight?
Okay, thank you.
But that would be something very new to our kids if we were to do something like that this year, as well as we've really tried to reinforce that. It's, it's been a hard, I'll say it's a hard pill for some of us to swallow because we, just because somebody takes an AP course versus more arts. We're struggling with that a little bit, um, and we'll have to work through some of those things. Because you can also use things, we could say, again, and I'm just throwing this out, not that we've talked thoroughly about this yet, but if you were in four years of band, could that get some extra weight?
And it should be noted that this is just for the guaranteed admission.
Yeah.
Those students out of, if there's, as, as Dr. Larson mentioned, if there's ten students with a four-oh, those three that don't get the guaranteed admission, they can still apply and get in.
Right, absolutely, yes.
You know, so it's, it's not like they're done.
Right. It's just, yes, that's very true.
Any other comments from the board? All right, then, um, we will, we'll need a motion to close this public hearing, then.
So move.
Second.
Second the motion.
Motion by Keller, second by Cundy. Board member roll call, please.
Cundy, aye, Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Virich.
Aye. All right, then, do we have a motion on, uh, for a resolution seeking waiver, waiver from the requirement of Wisconsin Guaranteed Admission Program? And if you'll note, there is, um, specific language in your board notes for what we need in this motion. And if anybody needs a copy of it, I'm happy to share it with you.
I move, uh, request, a motion requested, whereas the Wisconsin Guaranteed Admission Program, Wisconsin Statute Section one eighteen-point-five-eight, requires schools to prepare a class ranking of pupils enrolled in the high school as of the class's completion of grade eleven, and directs that pupils shall be ranked on the basis of academic achievement, and the sole creation of criteria for ranking pupils shall be the pupil's grade point average. And whereas Winnie County High School does not apply a weighted grading system, and as results needed, a way to break ties between students who have earned a four-point-oh grade point average in order to comply with the statutory requirements in Wisconsin Statute Section one eighteen-point-five-eight. And whereas in order to break ties for purposes of the Act ninety-five Class Ranking, WHS, Winnie County High School will apply tiebreaking criteria for ACT composite scores, and if needed, ACT subscores. And whereas the criteria aligned with the Academic Excellence Tiebreaking Criteria, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Winnie County School District as follows. I gotta read the last part, too. Winnie County High School is directed to seek a waiver for, um, DPI to apply tiebreaking criteria of ACT composite scores, and if needed, ACT subscores for purposes of Wisconsin's Guaranteed Admission Program, Wisconsin Statute one eighteen-point-five-eight.
I will second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Ackman. Any additional board discussion? If none, board member roll call, please.
Keller.
Aye.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Virich.
No.
Okay, moving on to policies. Mr. Cundy.
All right, everybody loves policy.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, the policies that are presented tonight and that are in your board packet have went through the committee, and it is the committee's recommendation for approval. The first policy, Policy twenty-two-ten Curriculum Development. This policy has been revised by removing language that is part of the education outcome goals and expectations included Section one eighteen dash zero-one of the Wisconsin statutes, and not the curriculum standards as outlined in PI eight of the Administrative Code. The appropriate language is included in Policy twenty-one-thirty-one Educational Outcome Goals and Expectations. The legal citations have been updated to accurately reflect the curriculum standards of PI eight. So Policy twenty-two-ten Curriculum Development, uh, as we go through these policies, you'll notice under Curriculum Development, the letter of A through E. Uh, those are all been reviewed by the committee and all for recommendation to be a part of this policy. As many times within these policies, if there's time periods stated and/or, uh, so on, up in the very first paragraph, the five years, evaluation process, the review of the evaluation process, at least every five years for curriculum development. Three-quarters of the way down the policy as well, um, we have listed, um, A, B, C, D, E, and F, and as you go through the policies, you'll notice as well, um, those letters, um, are been reviewed by the committee and are, um, designated to be a part of the policy. When we were given the policy as the committee, uh, those of us that are on the committee, remember we put checkmarks within those areas, and I think maybe the board packet didn't have all the letters in, in there to be checked, it just indicated the letters that we wanted within the policy. Anything else on twelve dash three? Twelve dash four. On the very bottom part of twelve dash four, um, where it indicates the board encourages, where it is feasible and in the best interest of the district, participation in programs of educational research, as well is an area that, um, in our packet, when we reviewed this as a committee, we had a checkmark put in that particular area. Any further questions on twelve dash four? Twelve dash five, um, Policy number twenty-two-seventy, copy of religion, of religion in the curriculum. And this policy here is revised to add legal citations and to reflect the annual notice requirement in the law. Policy twenty-two-seventy, as we go through the first page, you'll notice the, the new language. Any question within the policy on the first page? All ready? Twelve dash six. And next policy, Policy twenty-two-seventy-one dash zero-one, copy of Start College Now Program. This policy is updated to reflect that in addition to any tuition costs, the law requires that the district pay the cost of course fees and books to the same extent that a student who is attending the technical college and who is a resident of this state would be charged. who is attending the technical college and who is a resident of this state would be charged. And again, on 12-7, under tuition payments of technical college attendance, the student may appeal an adverse decision to the Department of Public Instruction. The board shall notify the student no less than 30 calendar days prior to the start date of the proposed course if it finds that the course either does not meet high school graduation requirements or is comparable to a course that's offered in the district. And as you know, when we get requests, if there's courses that are offered within the district, of course, we would not pay for courses that would send them to any other source of education. 12-8. Policy 2416, Student Privacy and Parental Access to Information. This is a revision. This policy is updated to improve the arrangement of the policy provisions to be more user-friendly and to update parental notification requirements. Any questions on 12-9? 12-10? And again, the language, the new language that's in the green coloring is, of course, the new language within the policy. 12-11 is, of course, the omissions from the policy. Anything else on that policy? Policy 2440-01, Summer and Interim School Attendance. This is new. As we go down through the policy, you'll notice the first area under summer or interim school attendance, an area that we would check, we would put a check in the first checkpoint under the board may establish minimum attendance requirements for any classes taken for credit. Anything else on 12-12? 12-13, Policy 2464, Advanced Learning Instruction Gifted and Talented Replacement is what we had called it. And this is, policy replaces the existing policy to account for significant revisions. The replacement policy includes new provisions based on state-based statutory language and administrative regulations from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. This policy was developed with the assistance of the Wisconsin Association of Talented and Gifted. Any questions on, on 12-13? Again, as you noticed down in the new language, the second paragraph, Advanced Learning focuses on identifying the instructional needs of students within K-12 grade-level system advanced learners gifted and talented are defined as students who give evidence of high performance, capability, or potential in any one or, or more, or five domains, general, intellectual, specific academic, leadership, creativity, and visual and performing arts. I just wanted to point that those are the five domains that are under the policy for the program Gifted and Talented, which of course is now Advanced Learning Instruction. 12-14, the very first paragraph where it states the five domains, as I stated, general, intellectual, specific academic, leadership, creativity, and visual and performing arts. And then it continues on as universal screening. We do not have a checkmark in that particular area, as well in the last part of that particular column, right before students with advanced learning, again, we do not have a checkmark in that paragraph. As we go down through the policy and look under instruction, of course, you've noticed that this here is all new language. We would have a checkmark in the area where it states accelerated learning opportunities should be available, including but not limited to early entrants to kindergarten, subject acceleration, whole-grade acceleration, and early graduation from high school. As we go down through the policy, the second to the last paragraph, the district administrator will evaluate the effectiveness of identification and programming for advanced learning through ongoing data analysis to measure both the growth of individual students and consistent implementation of advanced learning instruction and opportunities across all K-12 schools. And then you'll see a, a spot there where you could have a checkmark. I do not believe that we put a checkmark in there as a committee. Is that what each of you have? Okay, I, it's the second paragraph to the end. I did mark it as no checkmark, okay? And then the very last paragraph, the district administrator shall develop administrative guidelines which shall include those for valid identification, instruction implementation, and assessment of learning outcomes. We do have a checkmark there. Okay? Any further questions on 12-14? And those are the policies that we did review as a committee and my recommendation is for them to go under one motion for approval.
All right, any motion to approve all of the policies as discussed?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Cundy, second by Peterson to approve the policies as discussed. Board member roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Cundy, I, Keller.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye. All right, then, moving on to admin reports. Any communications?
Yes, I have one. I received a letter from a group and it's from some Winnie County band families and wanting to make sure that we give recognition and express gratitude to Mrs. Ron for her impact on Winnie County students and the community. Mrs. Ron shows her value in many ways. As a band director and teacher, she is continually encouraging students to bet, to do better and to be confident in her abilities and musicians while balancing academics. Also, Ms. Ron goes above and beyond teaching. She encourages students to be part of a band family by teaching students to show kindness in everywhere and everyone, also known as the Winnie County Way. And also, as a community member, she shows her dedication to Winnie County in all she does. And the opportunities that she's brought to the Winnie County Community School District such as state honors band, conventions, solo and assembles, recitals, et cetera, is not only extra work for her, but it shows that she really believes in our kids and their abilities. Thank you, Mrs. Ron, for all your efforts and hard work. It does not go unnoticed. We are lucky to have you as a part of the staff here at the Winnie County Community School District. Sincerely from the families of the Winnie County Band members.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. HR, Financial Planning. We did meet, we, we discussed the, the track resurfacing and the skylights. There was, it was a closed session meeting, so those items that are for closed section, the notes from that meeting were in your packet. And then we will be meeting again on April 4th at 10:00 a.m., again, another closed session meeting. The purpose of these meetings, Monica just really wants to keep us up to speed on what's going on at the state level with the, the budget. Moving on to PR, Marketing.
Nothing at this time.
And Policy?
Yes, we did meet tonight with the next group of policies that we will be bringing forth on March 17th. We'll be meeting at 5:30 in the library to review those next policies for approval. As well, on our next board meeting agenda, there will be another set that will be there for approval.
And I'm just looking at this agenda, I kind of glossed over admin reports. I don't, was there anything that anyone needed to add over and above what was in the board packet? I apologize. All right. Mr. Cundy?
I just wanted to say thank you to our community. This last, yesterday, actually, our Winnie County FFA alumni, which supports our FFA and our Ag Education Program here in our Community School District, we held our annual chili feed. It was our 18th annual chili feed. The proceeds from that supports a high school senior graduate with a scholarship and we had in attendance, not only the excellent performance by our high school polka band as well as Tom Schneider and Two-Fifth Band. We usually have two different bands, it runs from 11 till 3, and we had just about 300 people in attendance. So it was a great activity, a great response, and it fully supports our Ag program and education here at the Community School District. So thank you to the community and all of them that helped us support that activity.
Okay.
I would just shout out to Mark, because he was getting his hands dirty serving chili. So he goes above and beyond to get dirty for the community. So I think, Mark, thanks for your continued commitment to the community.
And before we move into closed session, I just, there are a number of FYIs in this agenda that I just want to bring to the board's attention. Our next meeting, the high school sale team will be presenting their work. And then Mrs. Bodo, who's been doing the costuming for our school plays, since I think prior to the WCAC opening, she's retiring. She's been amazing. She doesn't really get paid for her work and it's, it's, it's quite a, an undertaking. So a huge, huge thank you to Mrs. Bodo for all of her, her work for our theater program. And then April 22nd at 5:30, we are doing that board workshop with Ted Nitsky from CSA. And then, most importantly, May 20th is our staff, staff recognition night at 5:30. It's at Off the Wolf and this is where we recognize staff for years of service and retirees. And it's such a fantastic program, so please mark your calendar so that you can be there. And with that, do I have a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Cundy, second by Peterson to move into closed session. Roll call, please.
Ackman.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Cundy, I, Keller.
Aye.